Taking that up and looked at it, and I think that's just a reminder to everybody that we need to be careful how we conduct ourselves, you know, here and away from the The lattes and legislatures that we had in town, what a, what an event that was. Ricky Ellison from the Missile Defense System was there. Just a, just a great event for this community. I want to thank Mr. Alberini for being one of the sponsors of that. And I want to say thank you to Ms. Munson and her staff, and the city manager, and Ms. King, and Ms. Hoffman was there from town. There was a lot of businesses that were there. It was, Phil was there. And it was a great event. It's just a way to showcase this community. That's the second one we've had. We had never had any until last year. We had it at the school, the first one. And hopefully we'll have some more of those. They're a great event. It's good to come and listen to people speak. Usually it's elected officials when they come to do that, but Mr. Ellison is a leading expert on the missile defense system, so it's good to hear that. The, last week I went to Columbus for a meeting with the Greater Ohio Summit. And when you go to these functions, not everything you hear down there is, you know, what you want to hear. Some of it's dry, some of it's not. But there was a couple of real interesting subjects this time. Brownfield, brownfields were talked about a lot. And the state dried up the funding for drive, brownfields. I just happened to be sitting behind the, one of the guys from Eastgate. And when this community got up and talked about the $25 million they got for the brownfields, we looked at each other and said, where'd they get that from? Because there isn't any money available. So I can't wait to hear from Eastgate where they found out that this brownfield money was, because they got it, and nobody else seems to know. Nobody in the room knew where it was at, or where they got it from. But Councilman Alberini and I went to NEOMED the night before the lattes and legislatures. They had a special dinner out there for Ricky Ellison, and there was, I think we were the only ones from Tormal County there. There was people from Mahoning County, and a lot of representatives and elected officials from the, let's see, the mayor of Vravna was there, the Portage County engineers were there, I mean commissioners were there. But it was a real nice, if you've never, if you haven't been to NEOMED, what a nice place it is out there. They've done a real good job with that. We met with the Tormal County Engineers last week, looking ahead for this year. And that was a really interesting meeting. And we met with the Newton Falls Area Commerce Association, and had some discussion there about this year coming up. Mr. Batisti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the utility review board as the alternate. And I need to thank Mr. Lynch for some quick action on, and I don't know what the process is called, but I think it's called road scraping, where they take out three feet of blacktop and then they pave it. Couple streets were marked like that. Residents had some issues with that, so I want to thank Mr. Lynch. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bariak.
We had a utility complaint meeting on Thursday, March 14th. All members were present. The complaining, complainees were not present. We made rulings, and that was it. We made our rulings, that was it, sir.
Mr. Stumpert.
Yes. February's numbers for the fire board meeting. Total calls were 116 for February, and that brought us to a total of 264 for the year, the end of February. The breakdown is as follows. City was 158, township was 75, mutual calls was 31. I do have some tentative numbers for March through the 17th. They had March calls, 200 calls for the month of March, 348 calls total. 55 of those were city for just through the 18th, 14 were township, and 15 were mutual aid. And keep in mind, the March number is just a tentative number. We'll get you the end of the numbers. I have a meeting on the 26th for the February, and we'll have the, I mean, for the March numbers, we should have then. And that's it.
Mr. Mayor. Okay. The Park and Recs will meet on Tuesday, March 26th, next Tuesday. Has it been canceled? Okay. Okay. Well, anyway, I'd like to make an announcement about, the baseball leagues are having a benefit breakfast at Amvets Post 112. And it's going to be all-you-can-eat breakfast benefits, benefit. And Sunday, March 24th, it'll be from 8:00 to 12:00 p.m. And they're having scrambled eggs, bacon, sausage, home fries, pancakes, French toast, biscuits and gravy, fruit, coffee, tea, juice and milk. So come on out and support them, and let's raise a lot of money for them.
Just a, did you say PM or AM? It's AM, right?
Oh, till 12:00 p.m. 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Oh, it's 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.? Oh, okay, till noon. Okay. I thought you said the whole thing was, I was like, whoa, it's late. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Let's see. Field day is March 30th. So they're going to be working on the fields, and I think they want anybody who's interested in coming out and helping. It could be just cleaning up things, you know, trash, and I don't know, I'm sure they have plenty of jobs for anybody interested in coming out. And also, the T-ball registration is still open, and they're in need of some T-ball players. So let's get a few more players out here. Thank you. Mr. Alberini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't mean to be redundant on our, I guess I was with you, or you were with me for most of these meetings. But anyway, we were invited to the Rixtown event, or Portage County event, for the missile defense meeting out there. And as the mayor said, the NEOMED facility is just absolutely astounding. It's absolutely awesome. We walked in there, and I took my breath away, it was so beautiful. But we had a chance to meet with the Portage County officials out there, plus Ricky Ellison. And then the following day, March 6th, we had the event at Robbie Lee's. I want to give a shout out to Robbie Lee. The banquet, the banquet facilities were just absolutely outstanding. The food was great. The turnout, we actually had 30 people that didn't show up, and it's probably a good thing, because we would have run out of space and run out of food. That being said, we have a number, we had a number of dignitaries come in from all over the state of Ohio. We had actually Colonel Zeez from the governor's office. The governor felt this event was so important that he sent his own liaison there as well. Our own staff at Newton Falls did a, just did a magnificent job. Mr. Lynch, Ms. Munson, Kathy, everybody got a chance to come over and, and visit and have some good food. The impact, don't mean to be repetitive, but the impact of this potentially coming into the area is extremely important for us. And we okay, are we gonna, we're having technical difficulties, guys? Are we okay? Well, I want to make, the Kiss concert was on last night in Cleveland, so I want to make sure we're cool here. But anyway, that was just, that was just a great event to showcase. There's a couple of components to this thing, if folks kind of, you know, haven't figured this out yet. Some of these events that we do are, is the marketing of Newton Falls, which has never been done before. And people say, why are you marketing Newton Falls? Because, you know, this is a great community. It's small-town America. The ambiance here of this community is just absolutely wonderful. And, you know, after you travel in business all day long, I don't mean to ramble, but, you know, you come back home here, you can walk down the sidewalk, don't have to worry about getting shot or anything like that. You can take your kids out, enjoy the parks and the rivers, and go fishing. So it's, it's pretty cool, and I'm honored to live here and be a part of that. March 13th, I attended the Tormal County Board of Health meeting on behalf of the mayor. He allowed, he cut me loose for, by myself. I felt pretty confident in that.
Thank you.
And March 16th, we had a, we, my company cosponsored an event at the Red Cross, at the Racina, which I don't gamble, with the Red Cross. We had five fire, excuse me, five counties send all their fire chiefs to this event. Chief Theobald was there, and a couple of his officers were there as well. That was just a wonderful event, too, so that's all I got.
Thank you. Attorney Fritz.
I have nothing to report, but I'm available for questions, gentlemen.
Any questions for law director? Mr. Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. Reminding everybody that on March 27th, the very first historic, therefore, for, is the very first presentation of the state of the city will take place. Mayor Waddell will present what I believe will be an annual tradition for every mayor going into the future here in the city of Newton Falls, and that's at 11:30. And please contact Kathy's office, 330-872-0806 for tickets. You do need tickets to attend that event, and we appreciate it. This community comes together all at one time, only on a few occasions, and what was seen in missile defense talk with Ricky Ellison was just one small example of how we can come together in this promises to be a landmark event. Secondly, we wanted to make sure that everyone on this council knows, and in the community, that a few weeks ago, we talked about a problem with our water treatment plant because of the condition of the Mahoning River. We are going to be having the council as a whole together to talk about that, but we're not able to do so quite yet, because our evaluation of those events, which will come in writing from the Environmental Protection Agency, has not emanated from their offices yet. And so we cannot sit down with you to talk about alternatives, about how to deal with that, until we hear from them. But one thing I want to make sure everybody understands, the very famous Blueprint for Prosperity, which brought in more customers from new housing developments, not in Newton Falls, and we're happy to serve them, means that our plant is being pushed to its, close to its capacity. And what that means is, we're going to have to start looking at some expansion plans, because if your plant's at full capacity without operating problems, when an operating emergency comes along, you've got to have some room. And so I think we're going to have to look at some alternative operating procedures, and eventually, some operating expansion opportunities. But one thing I want to make sure, water also generates revenue. So we're not talking about expanding our capacity to produce clean water for the people's taps, without also producing the opportunity for that customer base to support it. And so the, the water department is one of those self-supporting entities, and will continue to be so into the future. I attended some of the meetings that the mayor and Terry talked about, and earlier today, it was a great press conference with the folks from Venture Plastics. We're talking about that a lot more later today. But I wanted to mention the fact that I took a tour of the bar processing plant. You know, here at Newton Falls, we talk about wanting to expand our manufacturing and our commercial base, and that's all very important. But while we're talking about those things, already in our backyard, are major manufacturing concerns. We're going to talk a little bit more about Venture Plastics later tonight, but bar processing is one of the major steel finishing processing plants in the Midwest. And they are going great guns right now. They have four other plants, and those plants are going through the process of some expansion. So I went over there, and I took a look at their plant, and I left them with one message. This city council and this mayor wants to help them expand in this plant, here in Newton Falls. The more jobs we have, the more capacity and drawing card we have for people to go to our schools, and go to our shops, and make this a stronger community. On that point, I also don't want anyone to think that our emphasis is going to be strictly in the area of manufacturing. While that's also very important, we have a resource that other communities would die for, and that is, we have a riverfront. Now, think about that. Think about sitting on the porch, on the back porch deck of a major restaurant, while you're drinking your margarita, and then going down the river, there's somebody in their kayak, or their canoe, or paddleboat. The point is that this drawing card, our river, is one that we have to tap into. And please don't be surprised if you see some development plans coming forward that has the city council, the planning commission to approve, so we can make use of this wonderful resource. Newton Falls is about to experience one of the great expansion periods in its history, and we have to learn to be the conduit for that to happen. And I think we can do so. And, Your Honor, that concludes my report this afternoon.
Any questions for the city manager?
Are we going to have a finance report today?
Yes. Questions, are we going to have a finance report today? It is on the agenda, I believe, on a new business, and Madam Finance Director is prepared to do that. But we're also prepared to do that each and every one of the council meetings procedurally. If you can find a way to, we can get that on the agenda in the future at some time, we're happy to accommodate.
Question?
Well, I was waiting for your next change in the agenda, and I was going to make that motion, or, would ask, you could entertain a motion to have the finance director, Anna Musser, added to the agenda, and to give a financial report each and every meeting, and then also added to number six under reports, right after the city manager, so that she can give her reports right when everybody else gives their reports.
All right. You can.
It may be six on here, but it may be, you know, seven in the future. I don't, I'm just talking about under reports there, right after the city manager.
All right, I'll put that on the agenda as item number nine, then.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Chairman, could I be heard on that subject?
Yes.
Thank you. Tonight, you have one of the reports that you're otherwise anticipating for the finance director. That's an 80-page report. At every meeting, though, I've asked the finance director to be prepared to make a brief report to you at every single meeting, so not that we do not have an objection to that, we like the idea of keeping the council prized on a more regular basis. So we'd encourage the members of council to support this opportunity.
Do you want the, do you want the motion withdrawn, Mr.? What is your recommendation?
I'd like you to support the motion.
I'd like to support the motion that we just made.
I seconded it. Okay, other discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Beer.
Mr. Alberini has a question.
Being that the report is so detailed, probably the sleekest version of a summary is best. Short and sweet, to the point.
I would have to agree with Mr. Alberini.
Yeah, me, too. I, I.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question.
Yeah.
For listeners, if you want to make that a permanent change to the order, we realize we're changing the rules still.
Yes, I understand. Thank you, Your Honor. Any other questions? Comments? Roll, please.
Wait a minute, we're going to need four to change it now?
Yes. We're just adding it to the agenda, right? We're, we're just adding it to number nine now, but when you go to change it, you'll need four votes. Okay. Roll, please.
Mr. Beer.
Yes.
Mr. Alberini.
Yes.
Mr. Batisti.
Yes.
Mr. Bariak.
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert.
Yes.
Any other changes to tonight's agenda? If I would, I'd like to ask council to move under new business, item number three, the recognition of the National Honor Society inductees up to this point, and we can do that with them, and if they want to stay, they can. If not, they can go. Second. Discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Alberini.
Yes.
Mr. Batisti.
Yes.
Mr. Bariak.
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert.
Yes.
Mr. Beer.
Yes.
Well, I know that not all of you are here, and as I announce your name, if you'd stand up, please, and if I mispronounce your name, I apologize in advance. This is the 2019 inductees to the Newton Falls National Honor Society. Elizabeth Bereka, Brant Bungard, Hanan Carden, Logan Clanch, Julie Cross, Zachary Derry, Morgan Fedoroff, Alyssa Grunder, Trevor Hansel, Elizabeth Nutter, Keegan O'Connor, Gavin Ferris. Hope I got that right.
Oh, you did.
Thank you.
That's Irish.
Hannah Petro, Allison Simbeck, Bailey Shrum, Kalina Spicer, Andrew Stephens. And we had an honorary member this year, a foreign exchange student, Midley Lynda Sanson. That's great. Our family participated in that program back years ago. It's a, it's a great program. The National Honor Society is the nation's premier organization established to recognize outstanding high school students. More than just an honor role, Newton Falls High School serves to recognize those students who have demonstrated excellence in the area of scholarship, service, leadership and character. These characteristics have been associated with membership in the organization since its beginning in 1921. Newton Falls City Council congratulates and wishes the following inductees, all of you, the best of luck in your future. Is there a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I commend you, young people. You have a great opportunity, a great future ahead of you. I was a C student in school, so I can't say too much about being on the National Honor Society. I was always one of those kids, when they passed out the roses for that day, I had to go hide somewhere, so I wouldn't embarrass myself. But congratulations to you. That's something to be proud of, very much so.
Congratulations to young people. I was a member of the National Honor Society myself.
And I also played football.
Liar. What? Please.
I want to say thank you to everyone. I do want to apologize to you. I was asked to attend your function, I have in the last few years, but we had, we had a meeting that we had scheduled, and we had moved it around three times, and we set it up, and Ms. Donnelly called me about a week before that, and we'd already had the other meeting set up, and there were so many people coming to it, I just didn't want to go through the schedule again. So I apologize for not being there, and, but you guys do a great job. You're, you're good students, and I really hope that things work out for you in the future. Actually, what we're really hoping is that by the time you guys get done with your college, you'll be able to come back here and work here, and bring your skills and that back to Newton Falls. That's our goal, so.
Make a motion to suspend the rules, so we can take a picture.
Well, we got to vote first, and then, and we don't have to do it for that, so. Roll, please.
Mr. Batisti.
Yes.
Mr. Bariak.
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert.
Yes.
Mr. Beer.
Yes.
Mr. Alberini.
Yes.
So join me, the students, if you come over here. [applause] [inaudible] 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 Ladies and gentlemen, students. Thank you. [applause] 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 Okay, here's your list. All right, we need approval or a motion to accept the minutes of the March 4, 2019 meeting. Second? Discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Barayak?
No.
Mr. Stumpert?
No.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Albarini?
Yes.
Mr. Batisti?
No.
Am I missing the minutes?
Is there work accepted?
Hmm?
I guess we can just keep on rolling.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, let's see. We have a public hearing tonight on ordinance 2019-08 authorizing the purchase of property by the city. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this? I roll that closed. Uh, would the clerk please read, uh, ordinance 2019-07?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Newton Falls Board of Education.
This was tabled at the last meeting. We need a motion to, uh, remove this.
Some of...
Yeah, at my request, I'd like this item removed. We are very close to final agreement with the Board of Education, I believe, uh, but the agreement will not exactly reflect this contract by virtue of the fact that there's some other negotiated points, so removal of this item is highly appropriate. I expect it to come back on April 1.
Well, if you remove it from the table, then it has to be voted on. If you don't remove it, it dies.
Well, my point is, I, I guess the theory is we just reintroduce it in a new form. Reintroduce it on April 1 as a new contract.
Okay.
Remove it then, right?
If we don't need to remove it.
Well, who made the motion? Anybody?
Albarini, but, uh, you guys can withdraw those motions and it'll just die for...
I withdraw the motions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, would the clerk please read ordinance 2019-08 for its second reading?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase property from Michael J. and Christina A. Huskell.
A motion to accept, uh, 2019-08?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. I'd like to ask the city manager, uh, are we sure there's no buried fuel tanks and the property's clean? Uh, have we done any diligence on this property we're buying? Do we know what we're buying?
We do know what we're buying, uh, and, uh, I can't tell you that I have an environmental on that property because we don't have an application for it for commercial use. That's where normally you get an environmental, environmental for the property. However, uh, it's our understanding that the, um, the price based on what the history of what it's been offered for is that it's a very reasonable price and it's located in a crucial part of our community for purposes of our Route 5 development. So if the only thing we can do is put up the proper signage and some other light commercial uses like that, then, uh, I urge council to approve this.
Well, Mr. Uh, what if, what if we have to dig, we find there's tanks there and, uh, or there's, the soil's bad and we have a great expense and the person that buys it doesn't want it, then what, then what are we gonna do with it? Or we don't have enough property to do what we want to do with? We're buying a pig in a poke right now. There's, the owner that's selling this to us won't give us any kind of guarantee on it? Or he didn't give us any, any, uh, title, like he didn't do a title search or we didn't have a title or any kind of guarantee from him? We're, we're buying a pig in a poke.
Now, the contract requires that we get good title, uh, councilman. That's in the contract. So it, we have to get good titles. That's, if that's in the...
What I'm saying is he's not guaranteeing the property has environmental, has no environmental issues.
He's not guaranteeing the environmental condition of the property.
Any other questions?
I think it's important that we, the city, uh, become a partner in, uh, private development as we are doing with Venture Plastics. I think that's a key piece of property out there that, uh, we purchase. Uh, it goes along hand in hand with the Route 5, uh, development plans that we do have and it's a key component. So I think it's important that we, uh, you know, snag that piece of property as quick as we can.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to second address if anybody else had a first one.
Anybody else have a first address? Barayak?
I'm not against buying a piece of property, uh, that will help us, but until I know what we're buying, I'm not gonna support it. I thought we had just worked out where at least we know we could do something with it. Until I, until I know that we've done a little bit of, uh, research on it, I'm sorry. I thought this had been gone through.
Anything else?
Second address. Um, there's been talk amongst council about being, uh, pro-economic development and, um, my sense or my feeling is, is that, uh, sometimes you have to take a chance like that in buying property. Not everybody, not every property that you purchase may be clean or not clean, who knows? But I think that is a key piece of property out there. To my recollection, were there any tanks or anything out there previously?
I've been thinking about that for a couple of weeks and, uh, John, you've been there longer than I have. I can't remember a gas station being there ever. I know it was always a GNW from what I remember, but I don't ever remember Mr. Fritz.
I did just rudimentary research. If we don't buy it as is, they have to give us a disclosure form, anything they feel, the sellers feel, to put on there with regard to something...
Could you speak up, Mr. Fritz? I'm having a call here.
As long as we don't buy it as is, Ohio law for commercial real estate purchases have a whole list of things they have to disclose if they're aware of it. So I can't give you a guarantee, but the present owners have had it for a few years and would probably know if something was there of significance. As long as we make sure that they give us a disclosure form of the time of the title change and this is not, we still have to go through a title agency, have all the title work done, this is authorizing the manager to take those steps to buy the property. As long as there's disclosure form in there, if something were to show up later on, we may have actions against the sellers. So I think we have some level of security with regard to this.
That's what I'm asking. Do we have some recourse should we run into a juggernaut with it?
As long as we're not accepted as is and that's not what, I understand the initial contract was for options.
Did we, is the contract say as is?
Uh, the, the contract, I believe, was prepared by the law director, requires that we have an opportunity before I go forward with it to do whatever we need to. So, um, the answer is we don't have an environmental on that property at this time, but the seller's gonna have some liability if he's, if he's aware of a problem, he's not telling us about it.
Mayor, may I say, ask one more question?
You haven't really got your...
Are we buying it commercial?
It is commercial now.
That's what I'm saying, then why aren't we, what is, what are we, I'm having a misunderstanding about the difference. If we're buying commercial, don't we have rights?
All we have here is an option to buy. The specific contract with all the details has not been worked out and it's, it's, it's my job with the city manager to make sure that we bring it in at the best value with the least risk to the community. So what you're asking for, it doesn't matter if it's residential or commercial, when we buy it, we're not gonna buy it as is. If they insist upon that, I believe the city manager will come back, either do a study or come back to city council and advise that we need to do other steps. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but this is the first step. The due diligence comes when you authorize us to enter into the contract. Now we have to get the contract together and there are certain laws of real estate under for the state of Ohio that require disclosures, things like lead paint, things like, uh, brown, if there's a tank in there that they're aware of. When they did, when the purchasers, when they purchased it before, the seller's coming to us, they would've had to have some disclosures from some other seller saying there's a tank in there. So if it turns up that no one knew about it, it was hidden 100 years ago, then there's nothing we can, anybody can do about it. Even if we were to do, I mean, we could spend twice the value of the property, have an impact study done, but that's, seems rather silly.
I'll put it this way.
Well, I, I would ask one question of the law director.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that we could do without blowing the deal or having Mr. Lynch do without blowing the deal that we could do something that wouldn't, uh, jeopardize the deal, sir?
If the sellers gave us a disclosure form, we could be comfortable with the transaction.
Did he give us that?
We haven't...
We haven't done it yet, sir.
We haven't done it yet, John. Look, this is just an authorization to allow the city manager to enter into an agreement and then the rest of that comes into this with the purchase agreement and all the other information that you're looking for. That has to come after you give them the authorization to do it.
So, to clarify, this is just to enter in. You, when you get your purchase agreement, you'll be bringing that back to council, is that correct?
Well, here, this legislation authorized me to enter into a contract. Just because I'm authorized doesn't mean I'm gonna, unless I find that the protections we need are in place. So I'm asking you to authorize me to enter into it, but I won't, I'm not gonna sign anything until such time as I've made sure that the protections we have have to be in place that the councilman's talking about over there.
Prior to your, uh, executing, executing the agreement, would you, uh, be willing to at least talk to council if it's an executive session or wherever? On the floor, it doesn't matter.
Sure.
We, we need to know that information.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll, please.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Albarini?
Yes.
Mr. Batisti?
Yes.
Mr. Barayak?
Yes.
Would the clerk please read ordinance, uh, 2019-09?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an incentivized pre-annexation agreement into clearing an emergency.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Is this under emergency?
Yes, this is under emergency. Uh, I'd like to, after everybody, I'd like to read a statement.
Uh, I would just like to ask, Sub-Meier, if, if law director under, I believe, under emergency, it states that we can't fix the utility rate, um, under the council rules. I just wanted to verify from you that this doesn't break those rules and that this was legal, to pass it as an emergency.
Under 321, I think you saw this.
All right, if, if you're asking whether there's a conflict with the charter because it's a rate, I believe if you look at, we're talking about franchises and rates, we're talking about rate schedules. Those are things that have to be brought before the...
It says fixing a rate. And authorizing a fine on the franchise.
But it's not talking about an individual rate for an individual person or an individual company. Things like, uh, the utility review board makes decisions on people's rates based upon some issue that they had. So rate doesn't necessarily mean one individual. So the word, even though it says rate in the charter, the interpretation would be rate schedule, such as if you were a public agency, you have to go to get a approval from the Public Utility Commission, but municipalities have certain rights and regulations where we don't have to go through the Public Utility Commission in order to set our rates, but we can be sued by citizens through common police court if they feel that the rates are improper to be done. So I believe when we talk about franchises and rates in the charter, what we're talking about is rates set for all people, all people in the city, all people out of the city, all people that are bulk rates. All those things are part of our rate schedules, not individuals. And that's why I don't believe it's a violation of the charter.
My, I have no problem with the legislation. My concern is passing it as an emergency and not allowing the public to have a hearing on it. Um, that's my only concern, um, under the rules, but that was, thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to read a statement. "I want to thank the city manager for his hard work to get Venture Plastics to, to the village, but I've wrestled all weekend with this and according to my beliefs of openness and allowing the public speak, I feel after five years, one more month would not hurt the process nor nix the deal. Therefore, I will abstain from the vote tonight on this issue. The legislation, in my opinion, does not meet the criteria of emergency legislation." Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, please.
Uh, first of all, I thank everybody for attending the press conference, uh, earlier this afternoon at Venture Plastics. It was a landmark event here in the city of Newton Falls because it demonstrates, all members of city council and the mayor, the members of the administration stood on a podium with the president of Venture Plastics and affirmed their faith in the 120 employees that now are going to be seeing 1% of their income that they earned at Venture Plastics put over into the general fund of the city of Newton Falls on a graduated basis. Uh, this has been a very long-term project in terms of the negotiating, uh, and Venture Plastics is a growing concern. So that 1%, while we anticipate that after the finish of the graduation will equal around $55,000 coming to the general fund, I anticipate in the next several years, maybe in the next six or seven years, that will represent $75,000 to the general fund for the city of Newton Falls. But apart from Venture Plastics all by itself, all of you have now sent a message rippling throughout the community of Newton Falls or throughout northeast Ohio that Newton Falls as a city is in the game economic development. This is like that, that first shot fired over Bunker Hill. It was heard all the way around the world, at least around northeast Ohio, and, uh, I congratulate all of you for the role you've played in it. Councilman Albarini, uh, has been working on this for many years. The mayor's been working on it for many years. Uh, and the, the fact is that the people of Venture Plastics are so delighted to be here and some of you there at the press conference might've noticed that the president of Venture Plastics said, "We have 20 presses, we think we're gonna get another press," which means more workers and maybe another press after that. And then he indicated Venture Plastics needs to look for another place to build another plant. The point is that you're all participating, igniting of economic development in this community and, uh, I just look forward to what we're gonna see in the next few years and maybe even in the very near short term here in Newton Falls. So thanks to everybody.
Can I have an address, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Um, I, I wanna, obviously my remarks aren't scripted, but here's what I would say, okay? Uh, we spent a lot of time in the last couple of years working with, uh, Mr. Trapp, uh, Steve Trapp, Gary, Tim, Anna, former city manager, Haney, current city manager, David Lynch and the mayor. And, you know, a lot of seeds were planted, uh, to get them to come into Newton Falls here and we seen some of the comments on Facebook that said Venture Plastics hates Newt, hates Newton Falls, they're never gonna come in, blah, 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 blah. Well, in our discussions with these folks, it was just the opposite. You know, we want to help them grow. We want to help them expand. There's a stipulation, and correct me if I'm wrong, in the annexation or the incentive agreement that they give Newton Falls, uh, citizens first crack at employment there, which I think is very, very important. Now, we have Mr. Dave Hanson back there who's, who's really participated a lot with his property. Our goal was, when we started talking about this a couple of years ago, was eventually opening up the Route 5 corridor to come over, uh, and build a road to Warren Road to where Venture Plastics is, to possibly, potentially create an industrial park. So in order to, in order to, to start, you have to start somewhere. It's like any home, you gotta, there's a foundation needs to be built. Venture Plastics is the first block for us. And I, I, I tell you what, I feel, I feel darn proud of, of our, our staff here in Newton Falls for getting this done and for Mr. Trapp and his team for having enough, enough confidence in us to stay here. We were in competition, I think, with El Paso, Texas it was?
Yes.
So there was a good possibility that if we didn't participate with them, the plant may be gone. And I went to school in kindergarten or first grade, zero from zero, still zero. I'd rather have something in my hand that I can say, yes, you know, we're, we're glad to help you out than nothing at all.
Could I have a second?
Well, not yet. Um, as I was walking through the plant, I did talk to one of the, uh, management staff and he did say a lot of their work goes down to Mexico and they do have a plant in El Paso, Texas. So of course we were in competition with that. Um, I think the staff and everybody did a wonderful job on bringing them in here and saying, "Look, stay here, we've got some business for you." So I, I think it's a win-win for both sides.
I think one of the most important things about this is we started this annexation process, uh, you know, a couple, three years ago when the, uh, jet agreement fell apart and we have a couple of people on Facebook from what I've seen that gets sent to me that talks about land grab, land grab, land grab. And the biggest thing is it's everything but a land grab. Uh, every person that's been annexed into Newton Falls has voluntarily signed an agreement to annex. That's long from a land grab. That's, uh, people who want to be part of our community, want to do business in our community and want our rates and want our utilities. Uh, one of the things that, that I think sold Venture Plastics, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Venture Plastics had an outage not too long ago. And Bill George, who also has been very instrumental in this, a lot of things that you guys and the public doesn't know, when we started doing these things, we don't just sit here and talk amongst ourselves. We brought in the finance department, we brought in Bill George, uh, we brought in our rate people, we brought in people from Amp, Ohio to look and see what we were doing and make sure that everything was, was right and that we could do what we said we could do. But they had an outage out there and our electric department responded and within a very short period of time, got them back up and running. And if anybody knows anything about a plastics plant, when your plastics products get stuck in your presses, it becomes a little bit of an issue. And that's one thing that our community and our electric department and all of our departments, our water and our sewer department, everybody, uh, when they need to, to get going, they can get going and get it done very quickly. And that's an asset. Those are the assets that we have. Trying to sell off our utilities, our water, our sewer, electric is not a benefit to this community. Having these assets and being able to utilize these assets and give them rates that the other companies can't compete with is a very good asset. But these people want to be part of our community and I, I think that's the most interesting part of this, is you hear of all the, the, the bad stuff out there, but these people want to be part of our community. Nobody's being forced to do this. I think that's the greatest thing about this. We negotiated this, we sat down and worked on it and it's a, it's a win-win for everybody because this very well could've gone to Mex, gone down to El Paso and there, there is some, maybe some talk about some growth again, uh, depends on what they're doing. So... You first? Yes?
First address? Um, I just personally want to thank Mr. Trapp and all of the employees of Venture Plastics and I just want to welcome them to the city. That's all I have.
I'd just like to say that we, this has been a long time coming and there's been a lot of work gone into it on both sides and in the interest of expediting this, I think we oughta just go ahead and pass it. What, anybody that has been opposed to this has had plenty of time to say whatever they want to say. I think in the interest of working with Venture Plastics, we should go ahead and do this tonight and hopefully create a really good relationship with them because when they go to build that other plant, he said that it could be across town. It doesn't have to be in another community. Let's, let's foster this relationship.
Second address?
I was just out there at Venture Plastics and Mr. Steve Trapp said that Mr., for two and a half years, this hadn't gone anywhere, if it wouldn't have been for Mr. Lynch on the phone day after day after day after day calling him to get this process started again, it wasn't going anywhere. And from my understanding, the utility rates were passed, giving him, doing away with the surcharge was passed in December of 2013, waiving, waiving the utility rates for bar and venture. This isn't, just didn't come down yesterday. One month, the contracts, has the contract been signed, uh, Mr. Fritz?
That's my knowledge.
Oh, tonight we're voting on signing it. Well, uh, are we going to, by one month, what, what, what is the public by speaking of, they're, they've gotta be coming up here and saying, "Hey, we want the jobs." I want the job. I'm not against the jobs. All I'm saying is, why are we, why are we, why are we, is this, it seems to me like we're trying to thwart the public. Why are we trying to thwart the public for one month? It, it, one month after five years now and we can't let the people come and say, "Hey, we want this too." And let's get the public's opinion here. They have a right, they're taxpayers, they're, they pay the utilities, they, they live here, they're, we, we're, it seems like we're doing away with the taxpayer here. They're, they voted me in. They voted these guys in. I, I'm not voting against it, but I, but I, I want to let the taxpayer, that's, that's, I want to let the taxpayer, that's gonna be my position tonight. I don't think this rises the criteria of emergency legislation. This has not been a tornado here where, hey, we gotta, uh, hurry up and get somebody in here and do something. To me, it doesn't rise to that, sir.
Any other second?
Um, the only thing I want to say is, uh, Councilman Barayak, you raised an excellent point, obviously. The public's participation in all of our processes is important. In fact, that's one of the reasons why these meetings are now being broadcast on Facebook and YouTube and of course on our cable channel. But the, one thing I wanted to mention is that we have a representative democracy and all I mean by that is you five members of council are the ones that the public has appointed and, and trusted to gather the information and I have worked diligently to have you so informed as to what's happened on the Venture Plastic negotiations that every step of the way, the representatives of the people, uh, you, the elected members of city council have had all the information all the way throughout. The public, uh, doesn't participate directly like it's a referendum, like they have in some countries, otherwise you can't ever get things done. But because you've got five members of council who have been very well informed all the way, along the way, and I've even spoken to each one of you individually to try to get way along the way, and I've even spoken to each one of you individually to try to get your input as we go through this thing, this has been a very difficult process in order to get to this point. And you've heard the phrase, strike while the iron is hot. Venture Plastics is a hot iron, and we need to strike now and embrace what they've been bringing to Newton Falls.
Any other second address?
Let me just clear up a couple of things, because there's... Mr. Bariak made a couple of statements that are not correct, and I want to make sure that the public and everybody understands, since we're still live now. The utility rates that were given to bar processing at Venture Plastics back in 2013 were approved by council then, and that is an electric rate that was approved then. What's going on today is completely separate. Venture Plastics asked the city for an additional service entrance to their building when they built the new structure, because the existing electric for that building could not supply the whole structure where it was located. In 2015, council passed an ordinance that says if you want city utilities, you have to sign a petition that says that when you become contiguous, then you have to annex. There is no choices. And we talked about that with Venture at the time, when they asked about the new utilities and that stuff, that we told them that they were kind of under the gun now, because this would fit under the new legislation. And that's when all the talk came up about, you know, they're going to do their own due diligence, which they did. They looked at moving plants, they looked at switching utilities at the time, and they found out it wasn't a benefit to them. So, the 2013 utility rates do not apply to what we're doing today. And we do have an ordinance out there for any future company that wants to build, whether it's here in town on Route 5, because we have utilities on Route 5 also. Anybody that builds on Route 5, whether we annex them today or we don't annex them today, if they want to build out there and they want our utilities, they have to annex when they become contiguous. It's just that we can give them the utilities, but they'll sign an agreement, but as soon as they become contiguous, they have to annex. So, that's where this is, and that's where the negotiation started, to work with them to bring them into the city.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Has Mr. Lynch stated they have 20 machines? Some of these machines are probably as long as a two-car garage, maybe a little bit longer. And the horsepower is of the motor, and that plant's running three shifts. All that electricity is now going to be coming in through, going out through Newton Falls, and they're going to be a customer of Newton Falls Electric.
They were already a customer.
Well...
They just put an additional service in.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Go, please.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Batisti?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
I'm standing.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, there's a lot of work for that.
Do it again.
We need a motion to, for the second reading on 2009-09?
1909.
1909? Could you read that by title, please?
An ordinance authorizing city manager to enter into an incentivized pre-annexation agreement and declaring an emergency.
Motion to accept 2019-09 for the second reading?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Batisti?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
I'm standing.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
I have a certificate of appreciation.
What year's skipping in?
Yeah, we'll do that one. I crossed it off already. That's good, we're quick. Would the clerk please read Resolution 2019?
You disposed of it?
Sixteen.
I did. Sixteen. Resolution 16-2019.
Resolution authorizing the city of Newton Falls to dispose of unneeded equipment, property by sale of employees, by sale to employees, public auction, on internet auction, or salvage pursuant to Section 721.15 of the revised code.
Is there a motion to accept Resolution 16-2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Yes, sir.
If anybody's looking for 150 U Streetlights, that's the place to go.
They actually work. Must have worked.
Could I ask for some explanation from the city managers to... I know we got it in our legislation, but the public doesn't know.
Yeah, I'm going to turn this over to the finance director, who does a more micro-analysis of these things than I do.
Okay, so this ordinance resolution is to dispose of some properties. So, one is a dump truck, one's a tractor front line, and 150 U Streetlights. So, this will be typically a bid process that we do through gov deals. We will advertise it, and so, these are a motion to dispose of this, so we can sell them, and then...
Just switch over to LED.
Correct. This is part of the project that Bill George has presented to council before. This is the LED lighting. We have gone to LED lights. So, these are the sale of the old bulbs.
These are the incandescents.
Yeah, so if I bought one of those, I could...
Put it up on my street and light it up a little bit more.
Put in your man cave.
My man cave.
Roll, please.
Mr. Batisti?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Want to do this now?
Yes, you can do it now.
Thank you. Certificate of appreciation to Mr. Alberini and U.S. Safety Gear. The Newton Falls City Council would like to acknowledge and commend Mr. Alberini on his dedication and commitment to the city of Newton Falls. U.S. Safety Gear was a sponsor of the lattes and legislatures event held in Newton Falls to promote locating the missile defense system at Camp Ravanna. Mr. Alberini has demonstrated his dedication to and the interest in the community and economic development by his commitment to serving the residents, improving the quality of life of his residents. And the Newton Falls City Council wishes to express their sincere appreciation to Mr. Alberini for his service to the community. Is there a motion to accept this certificate of appreciation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you.
Sure you got the right guy?
Yeah, it's the right guy. It is important. You know, Newton Falls, and you're going to hear this next week, Newton Falls has played its own sandbox for a long, 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 long time. And you've got to get outside the city boundaries here to make this community something different and to bring business in that. And this missile defense system is not just big to Newton Falls, it's big to all of Ohio, the whole northeastern part of Ohio, and even parts of maybe Pennsylvania, because there's, you know, they'll be looking for jobs, and there's colleges over in PA that will certainly have candidates for those jobs. We're staying very aggressive on pushing our legislators to, you know, get the word out that we think has been already decided. So, we're hoping that we are the ones there, and I appreciate what you do in bringing that notoriety to our community.
I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Sure.
Folks, I'm very humbled and gracious by this. You know, at the end of the day, I think we, as human beings, we want to make our fellow citizens better. And anytime that, you know, I or this council or we have the opportunity to uplift the community, I think it's important that we do so. We may not always see eye to eye, we may not always agree on things, but I think it's important, as Mr. Lynch said earlier, and Mayor said earlier, that we come together as a community for the betterment of the community. And, you know, I just want to see Newton Falls grow. On a more personal note, I just want to eradicate this culture of losing. I want to start winning. I want to win. I want to win. I want to win. I think everybody here in this council and on this team, we want to win. And I'll tell you what, winning breeds winning. Breeds winning, right, Coach? So, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
I'm standing.
Mr. Batisti?
Yes.
Do you want a picture? Okay, well, we want a picture.
Well, we can do it right here if you want.
Yeah, we'll do it afterwards, we'll get a picture. We'll get it later.
Okay.
All right. Got it. The motion to accept the finance department's February monthly report and the bank reconciliation and the attachments as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, bless you.
Discussion?
All right, dear Honorable Mayor and members of council...
Be quick and brief.
Quick and brief. This is the February report, and the bank balance per the books was $8,387,867.88 for the month of February. Overall, the city brought in $12 million, and we spent approximately $11 million. We're fiscally sound, and there are many detailed reports, graphs, and income tax analysis, utility billing analysis, and a detailed report. The finance department is working on many various projects, and that concludes my remarks.
Any questions for the finance director?
I know last month, we've collected, but we're still on track to do well above with Rita, income taxes, we've...
As I stated before in the last council meeting, it's too early to tell, but in the report, there is an income tax analysis. We are on track as we know as of right now.
So, we're just on track. When will you have some analysis? Maybe after April?
After April 15th, we will have more of a report to provide, after the tax deadline.
And also, are you looking for volunteers from the council or anywhere to clean up? I noticed you had a cleanup of some records. Were you looking for any other volunteers, or...
Actually, I would like to recognize, we have our utility meter readers are volunteering to help that, as well as our city clerk Kathy King spent Saturday with us. So, we are organized, we have a plan in place, and we're reviewing our retention schedules and following the proper rules and regulations for our records.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Roll, please.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Batisti?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to accept the police department's February monthly report and the statements as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Batisti?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Need a motion to schedule a special meeting on Monday, April 1st, 2019, at 5:30, to hear a presentation from the Eastern Gateway Community College.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Actually, I see Councilman Bear, we attended a meeting over at Eastern Gateway. This is a meeting we've been talking about for a while, so I was going to defer to you for a couple of comments before I said anything on this.
Well, the Eastern Gateway, they're, you know, they're coming here to explain what their program's all about and how it can serve our community. I know you've all heard that this is to help the people that have lost their jobs at Lordstown, but it's not just Lordstown. It's for any related industries. I mean, even the way they talked when we were down there, even like a waitress who maybe the business closed up because now all their business is gone. If it's a hardship on anybody and their job, they're willing to put these people through college and get grants and so on. So, they're going to come and explain it a lot better than I can, but it's a very positive thing for the community, and I think anybody that's interested, anybody that's affected by the Lordstown closing should be up here for the meeting to hear what they have to say.
This is just another tool that we can put in our toolbox. As I've told you before, working with Team Neo and Jobs Ohio from some of these meetings that the city manager and I have been to. Eastern Gateway is another tool that we can use for the businesses in our community and the schools to highlight plans, highlight jobs that, you know, that need to be filled. I know that Venture Plastics has jobs that need to be filled, and they're looking for qualified people. We've been working with Team Neo and with Jobs Ohio to, they've talked to them to see what they need to fulfill those jobs, and we're trying to get people that are qualified.
I think they're working with the school, too.
Yeah, and they're working with the school, and the school's setting up a program to help train, you know, students who might not go to college, and they're looking for a job. So, this is just another tool that we could have, that we're trying to work with, and I think it's a great idea. You guys went, and then they're coming to do this. It'll give you a better insight on how this works and how we put it together and how we utilize it for our community.
I see one more.
Sure.
I was interested in this myself, but this is not just for young people either. This is for, some of the people in this program are senior citizens, and I, they talked about one person that was 70 years old, that was, you know, learning a new skill. And, you know, for anybody that's a senior citizen that maybe is looking for something to do, they have traits, or trades that they can teach them, so you might want to look into it.
Anything else? Roll, please.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Batisti?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
There's someone who wants to make a motion that council receive a written report from the Economic Development Committee once a month?
I would like to make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to mention that. I don't have, I think it's a great idea. A matter of fact, I'd like to expand this. I think all the committees should have a written report of what they do every month. Thank you.
Do you want to amend that?
Can I amend that?
You can make a motion to amend.
I make a motion to amend that, sir.
All right, there's a motion to amend it to envelop all committees to make a monthly report. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
What would the, what would that entail? On what, police department?
All committees.
All the committees.
All committees.
The committees according to what we have...
All the standing committees. All standing committees, yeah. Okay, any discussion? Roll on the amendment.
Batisti?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion has been amended to make all committees submit a monthly report. I guess I would like to ask whoever wants to make, that made this motion, to define this a little more, because the Economic Development Committee makes a very detailed report every meeting, and it's already in writing. You get it when you get your minutes, it's in writing. So, what are you looking for? What else do you want? Because it's already in writing. It's verbally given to you, and it's in writing every month, so what else are you looking for?
Something in writing.
It's already in writing. You have it in your minutes, you have it in your packet tonight. So, I mean, it's already there. I just, I'm not sure what else you want, because the minutes are already written and the report's already there. It's given verbally and written every meeting.
Where is it given written?
It's in your minutes. Read your minutes. The report that I give every meeting on economic development is in your minutes.
But that's not a written report.
That's not a written report, that's...
Somebody had to write it.
I didn't see nothing in there. I see something from the mayor. I didn't see nothing in there, it's, I see something from the mayor.
I don't think it got there by itself, somebody had to write it.
Look, what, did you write it? Look, Mayor, I'd like to say something without being disparaging. This whole thing is boiling down to, I feel this council has been boxed out. We've tried to get others to be on economic development, which has failed. Tonight, we had a, just a perfect situation is where the law director said we weren't changing any rates and then you, I'm not gonna argue it on the council floor, and you said we changed the rate in two thousand fifteen or something, blah, blah. I'm not gonna argue that point, but here's the deal. We don't know and we haven't been kept abreast of what's been going on with economic development. I'm sworn to the same confidentiality as you guys are. We don't know anything until, here it comes down the pipe, we know nothing except it's time. Okay, here's, vote on this or vote on that. Now, Mr. Lynch has offered to put us all on. Maybe that's the whole thing, then at least we'll know what's going on. I've tried to at least get one more member on, so at least we're, somebody will know what's going on. In other words, it's, I feel we've been kept in the dark. I had to find out some things that if you don't ask, you'll never know. And that's, that's not right. I feel we're elected members and if people ask me questions, if I don't know or I can't tell them, that's one thing. But if I'm allowed to tell them, I should not be, oh, well, you know. That's what the problem's been, Mayor. And that's what we're trying, that's what we're trying. This isn't... This is the Terry and Lyle show.
Again, I'm not sure what you're looking for, because...
I know what I'm looking for.
Well, I know what you're looking for, but you're still not gonna get that.
Oh, get what?
Whatever you, whatever I think you're looking for, things that I can't tell you. I will.
Explain yourself.
I will. The things that I come here and tell you every meeting are the things that I'm allowed to tell you and the things that we are doing. And they're also into the minutes of the meeting. They're entered right into the minutes.
According to the charter, Mayor, what gives you the right to negotiate contracts and even be on, and even be on economic development, according to the charter?
You gave us the authority, Mr. Bariak.
When did I give you the authority?
I showed you that two meetings ago when you adopted the resolution, or the, the motion on council to keep us on economic development. I showed you that two months ago and you did that.
As of two thousand seventeen, we had the right. And I haven't gotten that opinion on that yet. At the end of Mr. Alberini's term, two thousand seventeen, I put a motion on the floor, sir, that two thousand seventeen, he started his new term, two thousand eighteen. I have never had a legal opinion whether that was done right. I had a motion on the floor to replace him the beginning of this year. And I have never had an opinion for Mr. Fritz yet. I asked that in front of Mr., uh...
Again, what, well, I'm gonna tell you. You asked that question. All I'm gonna tell you is, I tell you everything I can tell you at these meetings that I go over in very detail. You get a very detailed report for what we do and where we go, what we do. If you think for a minute that I'm gonna put something in writing that I'm not telling you in public, you're nuts. I'm not gonna put something, if I'm sitting here telling you something in public, it's 'cause I can tell you that and it all becomes part of the public record here. It's on audio, it's on tape, it's in the minutes. I'm not gonna sit down and write a report with something in there I didn't tell you publicly.
Why aren't we called in the back room? Why aren't we called in the back room and kept abreast of what's going on? Why are we in the dark?
John, how many times have we told you in the back room what's going on? Many, 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 many times. But if you think that you're gonna get something else in writing that you're not getting on, well, then...
Why aren't we called in the back room? That's all I'm asking, Mayor.
All I'm saying is, you're getting everything I can give you in a verbal report every meeting and a written report when you get the minutes. I'm not sure what else you want, because there's nothing else I can give you. If I could give it to you, I would. If we're in negotiations with somebody coming into town or a business or we're working on, we don't have the authority to sign a contract. This thing you passed tonight for Venture Plastics, somebody's gotta put it together and we put it together and it was presented to you and you voted on it. So, we're not hiding it. It just has a process you go through and that's what we do.
I wanna say something, Mr. Mayor. It's Mr. Bariak's point. First of all, let's go back to the beginning of the resolution. You're asking the economic folks, which is me and Lyle and David and whoever, to put a written report down. Here's my personal notes here, I'll give you my personal notes. But Kathy's transcribing exactly what we were saying into the minutes for the following meeting so you can read. I'm not sure what more, I don't know if you know Declaration of Independence that big or what, I don't get it. But as I, and Mr. Lynch was so kind to say multiple times at the beginning of the meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, he called each one of us council people and explained. Am I correct in saying that? This is what's happening, this is what's happening, this is what's happening, this is what's... Now, to the mayor's point, we can't make stuff up that ain't there and we're not. You know, and multiple times, we have been in the back room and we have told you everything, everything what we know, everything. You can't make up stuff that just isn't there, you know? No one's trying to hide anything, but I will say this. I have no problem doing a report, but you need to do a report, but Joe needs to do a report, Mark needs to do a report and Phil needs to do a report. Do it for everybody. As simple as that.
Have we voted on that?
I have no problem, I have no problem doing that.
I think...
So we have resistance here.
Okay, one aside, one aside, one aside. He's still talking, he's still talking.
All right, excuse me.
But see, the thing is, you know, you have, you want us to do it, no problem here, but you don't wanna do it. Why is that?
I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
Yeah, I'm done.
Mr. Stumpert?
I just have one. This doesn't to anybody's point, I'm just trying to be mutual here. But if we have any more Venture Plastics deals, 'cause it was my understanding that Venture Plastics was already in the city when it happened back in two thousand thirteen. I was unaware until David Lynch bought this back up to us that they want into the city. I knew they were getting a special rate. Those are the types of things that I just would have liked to have... I know that we were bought into the loop really late and that's fine, but I just thought they were automatically in 'cause I wasn't on council back then and I, you know, and this is to Terry or Lyle, but I'm not, I wasn't on council back then, so I didn't know what went on. I don't know what was passed. I was glad that somebody asked for some records. I think Mr. Lynch presented, I don't know who, but it was nice to see that legislation back then so that we can see those things, 'cause I was unaware as a councilman that those things existed and how they were bought forth. And I'm not, I'm not trying to say that you guys were hiding those, 'cause I didn't even know they existed, so I would've never even known they were there. But I was glad that they were bought to my attention before the whole deal came together and was bought forth. Now, rather, if there's any more Venture Plastics out there, if we could present those things, even if you have to present them in the back room, I'm fine with that. I just would like to be aware of whatever it is. I'm not accusing anybody of hiding anything or him or anybody. What I'm asking for is just some clarity on whatever, if we have any more Venture Plastics deals out there that have gotten special deals or whatever and passed legislation that has been in past councils, I would like to see that when we go into a deal with them, because I don't, I don't know what I don't know. And that, I think that's where the big shortfall is with me. And I don't, I don't know what I don't know, so I can't help that. Unless somebody brings that forth and says, "This was passed, you know, two years ago," or I think the last one was in thirteen or fifteen, I'm not sure. I wasn't on council, so I don't know. But those are things that I'm looking for, if there's a deal going on or in the hopper, even if you have to go into the back room, I think that would make sense for all of us to be aware of it. And it's not, that's all I'm asking.
Let me ask you this question. Did you vote on the annexation of the four hundred and forty acres?
I did.
Okay. Then, I can assure you, and anybody who's at this table, the law director or anybody else that's sitting here, that was discussed in the back room, that Venture Plastics was not in this. If you remember specifically, if you remember specifically, Venture Plastics wasn't quite ready to go. They weren't quite ready to go. And we had to pull out three pieces of property, because if we would've continued the annexation in the process that we were doing, Venture Plastics would've became an island. And we told you that they were gonna be an island. So, you knew at that point in time that they were not annexed, because we pulled their property out of the annex process as we pulled the other property out, because we could not do it, it would create an island. So, it was discussed in the back room. You guys did know that that was not annexed, so don't tell me it was annexed in two thousand thirteen and you didn't know.
And in response, I didn't know if you were talking about the new part of the building. There's a land back there. I didn't know if you were talking about the new add-on part or their previous one.
We had a map, we showed the map.
I'm just saying.
What, the mayor, what, the thing that hurt me the most was, I understand line items, professional services, membership and dues and all that, but when I get a call and a fellow says, "Are you gonna go ahead with the fifteen, almost fifteen thousand dollar contract?" And I know nothing about it. Don't you think that somebody oughta have said something to the rest of council? And you know that when Mr. DeChristopher called me and Mr. Haney had signed it and we knew nothing, don't you think the rest of this council oughta be entitled? Don't you think that we oughta be entitled? What I'm saying is that, is that, look, it's taxpayers' dog, I understand that.
No, no, it doesn't have anything to do with us. That has nothing to do with us. We didn't do that. We didn't set up the fifteen thousand dollar contract. That was a professional service contract set up by the city managers. We don't do that, we're not allowed to do that. We had nothing to do with that contract.
You didn't know about buying the property out here on Route Five E.
I did know about that.
Oh, okay.
That's part of our job.
We didn't know until we, until we were called in the back room.
That's the idea, John.
And I didn't wanna get into administrative.
That's what it's about. We told you, didn't we? You knew about it, that's right. Well, we told you about it. Don't say you weren't told, because we did.
Done deal.
No, it's not done, you just voted on it today, it wasn't a done deal. It's not, it's not a done deal until you vote.
And if we didn't want it, we'd have lost a thousand dollars escrow.
If you didn't want it, you would've voted against it, John. It's not a done deal until council votes for it. We don't have the authority as an Economic Development Committee to vote or do anything. We are like any other committee, we get everything set up and we present it.
Mr. Wardell, sir, I hate being let in on a tail end of something and then asking for support. If I would just be kept in the loop...
John, there's things we can't do.
And I, like I say, sir, under the charter and my oath, I'm bound by the same confidentiality as everybody else is. If I let it leak anything out, and that's why we wanted to put somebody else on in the economic development.
Two thousand twenty, you might have an opportunity.
So at least we know, at least we know.
Two thousand twenty, eleven opportunity to do that.
Well, I'll tell you what, we may end up doing that before, because we're getting a legal opinion now.
Good. I don't think it's gonna work.
We're getting a legal opinion and we're gonna see where...
Well, again, the taxpayers are, I don't remember seeing a, um, did we, we did not pass any legislation to do an investigation or get legal opinions, so how did you guys? I said, we didn't pass any legislation to get legal opinions and to do investigations and that. Well, you just go to somebody privately and say, "I want it done." That's not how we do that, that's interference with appointments. So it's not, it's only if he wants it, you can't go to him and do it.
Are we gonna, under administration, can we ask for, can I ask for a legal opinion? Are you going to ask for a legal opinion? Mr. Lynch, are you going to ask for a legal opinion?
You better go on the motion.
Well, if we don't, if you don't, then I'll put it on the floor.
I'm answering what the question...
A legal opinion on, I wanted to get a legal opinion on what the mayor's...
Yeah, you're off the subject, we're on another subject. Let's, let's deal with this.
Well, we'll get it settled around.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We'll get it settled around there.
There's a motion to have all standing committees do a written report monthly on what they're doing.
I think somebody already made the motion, right?
Yeah, there is. Any other discussion? I just wanted to rephrase the motion so they know what it was.
Oh, okay.
Roll please.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
No.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Batisti?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, we need a motion to add the finance director to the agenda items and under, under reports, after council members.
Second?
There's a motion and a second, any discussion?
I just wanna clarify the motion, it's going to put her at the top?
No, I'm gonna put her in between the council members and the law director.
Right, but she's also gonna be listed at the top?
Under reports.
Right, under reports, but she's also gonna be listed...
No, she's not listed up there. Those are council members and the law director and the city clerk. No, she's listed down here under reports.
She wouldn't be under that.
No, no.
So she's gonna be under number six on the list?
Number six after council members.
Okay.
Any discussion? Roll please.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Batisti?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Okay, public comments.
John Roscoe from the NFYBSL Baseball Softball League. Just a couple of quick things I wanna touch base with. As Mr. Beer was saying, March twenty-fourth, the breakfast at Damn Vets, eight AM to twelve, twelve noon. Come hungry. Bring everybody, pack it. All the coaches and managers and that will be down there serving breakfast. So, March twenty-ninth is actually a Friday, we're gonna do Field Day. We got the township involved. They're actually gonna be bringing some chippings, grindings up and redoing the parking lot and hopefully we get the city involved too and get some equipment up there and do what we can on that Friday. Like I said, it's March twenty-ninth. March thirtieth is actually gonna be for the baseball teams.
Can I, I believe that whoever talked earlier, I wrote down March thirtieth, the baseball field day, that the twenty-ninth is...
Twenty-ninth is gonna be Friday at ten AM. We're gonna have the township and the city to come over. Just because that'll be a Friday where they're working.
Do you want anybody to help you there too?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll send texts out to Bill and Harry and them. And then we can go from there. Like I said, I'll be over there at ten AM, I reached out to the township already. They're gonna have truckloads of grindings and that come up for the back parking lot, get that filled in, get it all leveled out. And get some dirt, the dirt moved from the middle parking lot, move it to the back parking lot, get that all cleared out. And all the fences from Field Five is still over there, so hopefully we can get that taken over to Falls Recycling, get that turned in and get that money turned into whoever.
So this is a two-day event, the twenty-ninth and the thirty... Okay, good.
Yep. March thirtieth is gonna be more for the baseball teams. It's gonna be a mandatory practice. Another thing that we're looking to do is June first, it's gonna, we're gonna promote a appreciation day to the community. It's kinda gonna be our giving back to the community, 'cause everybody reached out to us, given us so much money. We're gonna have food vendors, food trucks. We have sixteen teams. Start at ten AM and our last game's gonna start at eight PM. We're at baseball games all day long, food vendors, so hopefully we can get people from the city up and we can come up there and support all the baseball teams. Another one that we decided to vote on that we're gonna do, we're gonna do for the high school, we're gonna do a baseball and softball scholarship for the high schoolers. So that's another thing that we brought up and then we're gonna get back to the high school. So with that being said, we're definitely moving forward. Field Five, we're gonna start installing the fence, all the fence is down, so hopefully this week here we'll get the fence starting to be installed. Practice has started and all the teams are formed, so we're looking good. Sixteen, I think we're right around sixteen teams and then T-ball, we're looking about six teams right now, T-ball. So, I just wanna thank everybody from the city for all the help and that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Batisti?
Thank you. Again, I'd like to welcome Venture Plastics to the city. And I think Mr. Roscoe's doing a heck of a job with that baseball softball league. I think in the past year or so since he's been on there, they've been going leaps and bounds. A year, two years?
About a year and a half.
About a year and a half. They, they, they create headway. So, you're doing a great job, John, keep it up. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bariak? I'd like to, myself, I'd like to, it's about time we got Venture Plastics in here. I feel we, this community wants to move forward. I'd like to see everything move at a decent pace and I'd like to participate in that process. I'm sure the councilmen here would like to participate in it too. Thank you.
Mr. Stumpert?
I would also like to thank Venture Plastics for embarrassing me, there's my press conference and bringing my jersey to life.
I thought it would fit.
For those of you that don't know, I played for Venture Plastics back in the eighties. They've been around the baseball league and they've sponsored several teams over the years. The other thing I'd like to add is, I don't know if I told you, but the fire board meeting is the twenty-sixth of this month at six PM. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Beer?
I'd just like to welcome Venture Plastics into the city. And I'd also like to say, remind everybody that Healthy Treasures is, has formed a group called a Blue Zone Group and it's all about having a healthy community. They're planning on having tentatively on the twenty-seventh of April, their first walk. It's called a Moe Walk. And what that is, is it, it's a group of people, like you're, get your best friends to come out and walk with you. And, you know, a walking community is a healthy community and, you know, so anyway, they're having their meeting next Monday night at six-thirty and it's in the Forest of Youth facility that's in the old K heart building. So anybody that's interested, come on out, see what's going on and support this. So, anybody that's interested, come on out, see what's going on and, and support this. I, I think, you know, a healthy community is, is a good thing, so come and see.
Mr. Bear? I want to lighten the meeting up a little bit. I had a chance to go back and look at the YouTube videos of the council, of the council folks doing commercials on, on, on the YouTube and the presentation and I'll tell you what, I thought you could do the evening news on Channel twenty-seven, the way you presented your stuff. I was waiting, Phil Bear, WKBN, Channel twenty, I thought you did a wonderful job.
Who can do the weather?
All the councilmen did a great job.
Who can do the weather?
You could, you could, but...
Over here, we have a cloudy day.
But on a lighter note, folks, I...
The sun's coming out.
Exactly. Let's get used to winning. Let's get used to winning. That's where we're going, let's get used to winning. Thank you.
Tony Fritz?
Nothing to...
Mr. Lynch?
Just, again, thanks for your participation. Venture Plastics was just, I think, the very beginning of some exciting things happening in town and as you see them, I will continue to have sessions with members of council so that we can keep informed as to what the terms are for various projects that are coming. As you know, tonight, we did not move forward on a contract with the school, but that project is still one that's being discussed and I think I've probably sent you more emails than you can count on some of these projects and I'll continue to do so because an informed council means the public is informed by you being informed. Thank you.
I think it's, it's, it's nice to sit back and look at the, the time that's been involved with this economic development from the previous administration to the current administration and what we do to try to enhance the community of Newton Falls. There's a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of time spent doing those things and it's nice to see when something comes together and, and happens like this. It was, like I said, there was a lot of work involved with that, a lot of going back and